Public hearing is closed. Now we move on to the next portion of the agenda, and that is, Resolution R 28C 2021, Resolution by the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners concerning Berdichikin Commissioner Districts. We're looking to take initial action on this, Council, and then we need to be the guidance. You've done the steps of introducing it, you've had your comments, you've had public hearing. Now, I think I told all of you, it's a three view vote on this. You've heard lots of people, at the end of the day, this is your guys' decision, so this is a chance, as you would normally have, to discuss this amongst yourselves, and proceed on the action on the side, if that's your desire. Any comments from the Board of Commissioners?
Oh, yes.
The floor is yours, Mr. Dieter. Do you have anything to add, or whatever?
Again, I'm just wondering, because we're going to be voting on it next week, too, right?
That is correct.
Right, so it might not be bad to just maybe discuss some of the issues and see if we can help in any way, because I love to help people.
Very cool. That is Mr. Ted Hilton?
Ted, can I ask a couple of follow up questions?
Yeah, please.
Ready?
Ready.
I get the notices that we put out for legal process, which probably eventually will be changed a little bit, but offhand, do you know what the current subscription rate is of the South Bend Tribune?
I do not.
Okay. Do you know if that subscription, so we don't know any people, in Altona, New Carlyle, Arthurberry, Lakeville, Walkerton, here, we don't know the broadness of how the paper goes out?
I don't know.
Do we know when a paper goes out, just, not like our day, in boxes, but goes to the Myers, or do we know how many, not just this particular, but how many other papers go out in the community?
I don't know.
Okay. Do we know, do you leave them notices on my newspaper, because I've never seen any online?
I'm not sure how Danna does it, a lot of them do, but I think.
Okay, so then, at the end of the day, I get, we are covering attorneys, we're covering the legal aspect of what we have to do. My point is, which has been kind of the comments here, which we've seen, majority of people speak, you know, "We didn't know, we didn't know," all that stuff. Again, having them available, probably, I saw too, that I don't think we did a very good job of, "Hey, folks, here's the information," because at the end of the day, this turns into work right now, okay, which is, that's politics, so. At the end of the day, I don't think we have done a good job of providing information of, okay, they did go out, that legal part is covered, but we don't know how many went out to newspapers, we don't know how many went online. I would say, the number of people that I know that read newspapers, as opposed to getting our stuff online, that's makes more people do it online.
When you mentioned media legal requirements, there was no legal requirement, if you didn't notice. We went above and beyond by both adopting guidelines.
I get, that's an argument, but at the end of the day, legal arguments are that. I'm looking at people, which is evident here on both sides, they need to get the information. So I don't think we did a very good job of providing, which isn't anybody's fault, I think that that's a valid, which either side wants to use that talking point, I think that's a valid point of, we have no idea how many went out to newspapers, we don't know how many subscriptions there are, we don't know for when, but the totality of this, the Mission Walker enterprise, you know how many subscriptions they have?
Yes.
That's my point, okay. Which, I'm not letting you, I said, this is part of the whole issue of, if we truly want to be transparent, which everybody says, if we truly want information to go out, this is a very important topic, okay? We should have done more to push, hey, on the 19th public, again, this is kind of, I wish we could have had this, did it ninth, and more people could attend, I wish we could have had it, but it's not on a claims agenda, it could be on its own entirety, but we'll go here, so. And we've heard, that's, I don't know, any other questions, anybody else have any other follow ups or questions?
I do not.
I have a question already, Tom. I was a little concerned initially, when they came up and said that this is a racist, and then I'm like, oh my gosh, I'm not racist, I don't have to be that selfish, I'm just discussing it, I hope, so that people feel happy and nice, because I don't like this and I love helping people, so, I was concerned about that.
I don't think that's a question for Ted. I can't really hear, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just concerned when they came up saying that this map was racist, and I'm like, oh my gosh, how did that show up? I didn't know, so, if we can talk about it and...
No, I don't, I don't think that it's appropriate for me to discuss that.
I'll be glad to.
Obviously, I disagree with that contention completely.
Oh, I'll be glad to understand.
Okay, yes.
You know, I grew up in Mission Walker, and we've had all kinds of people there, I love them, and I admire these people.
We've had public hearing, this is one of the commissioners who have had discussion amongst yourselves.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Another, because I have a couple of...
All the time you want.
Really? Another, just observation, and everybody here, what everybody's said on both sides, that's cool, I'm glad, we're having this debate where everybody can express how they feel, one way or the other. The other thing that was brought up, Mr. Bremmer, you still here?
Yep.
Okay, cool. Like, as the map is proposed, mine district two, which includes the city limits of South Bend, and for all that don't know, there is a distinct divide between city council and county council. Like, stuff that would be in Commissioner Morton's district, or our districts, or whatever, the city, they take care of city business, we do county business, okay? So, as proposed, this graph would have me in district two, which, as a mayor, has nine city council members, would end up having three commissioner, I mean, county council members, and me. So, if you take that, what do I do, okay? Like, everything that happens in there, that's a city issue. I've really never seen any of us really, hey, we're going to come in and talk about leaf programs in the city, well, the city does that. So there's basically, whoever would be in district two, I don't think you have a lot to do, because that's in the city, they carry that. And the other, the other comments that everybody heard is, that's where I'm at on this, I think everybody's asking for everybody, for all of us to work collectively for the good of St. Joseph County residents, which I agree with, I think there hasn't been enough input, you know, we got a couple maps, I don't know if anybody else has drawn maps, and to say, this is the right way to go, well, we haven't really discussed that, we haven't had five different maps in front of us, made up by whoever wants to make them, that we go down the line of saying, this is good, this is bad, okay? I get, I get the political game, and it's definitely a game. People are here, oh, you're going to vote the party, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, that's ridiculous, okay? Take me personally out of it, okay, district two. So I wanted a district with 58, 59% Democrat. So the thought of however you draw a district, that goes up in smoke, because whoever works the hardest, raises the most money, and connects with the people, wins the election. However maps go, they go. But at the end of the day, from my perspective, and I'll be vilified, whatever, that's cool, because this political stuff that goes on, at the end of the day, is unique, and I'm going to keep that out, but at the end of the day, like, my ears on a police, cut, spit on, punch shot at, so this little drama of political things that go on, big deal, okay? At the end of the day, my point, going door to door, the people that work with me were black and Hispanic, going into neighborhoods, I can go into any neighborhood, but the point being, it's your voice that decides the map. We're here to facilitate what's good, that's your voice. I don't say, I don't say, hey, we're doing it this way, we listen to you, so that's why this public meeting is important, I think we should have more public meetings, I don't know, I know I think we haven't spent it, done by the first, or before the first, or whatever that thing is, I think public input, if we truly believe in that, that should be riding this whole thing. It shouldn't be, your party wants to do this, your party wants to do that, I want to do this, no, this is your, this is your time, and it's our responsibility to listen to you, of what you want to do, again, it's evident, okay, it was, we did the legal part, I get the legal game, but it's evident that people had no clue, they didn't know, they didn't know how to draw maps, so whoever did draw maps, good for you, because I would not have drawn that. So again, I'm just thinking, today's vote, if however that goes, there is a time period for more public input, and I would be more than happy to talk with the county council, I think we should talk with the county council to get more input as we go. So again, I really despise what happened in our country this year of rioting, fires, all the garbage that goes on when parties, let me back up, we are not watching the scene, we are not far left socialists, we're not far right people, we're all people, we own each other forever, work each other forever, no people, we should not get, we are at tugging and pushing and dividing, dividing aspect of all this, I despise that with politics, I just, that is, there is no room for that anymore, okay? We're always going to disagree, Andy and I disagreed on some stuff, that's fine, I have no problem with that, but at the end of the day, this should be the public telling us what to do, and we follow the public, so.
Oh, no!
Commissioner, if there's any other questions, y'all can have your time, because again, I'm just saying that we should have more time, because this is the first time that we've really had a lot of public input, because the public hasn't given, had the right opportunities to, other than some emails, which are coming in now, because the press has put some stuff out, so, in the future, I think we just need to be more cognit, of putting all of our stuff out, we do agendas, we meet every Tuesday, we meet da-da-da, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of public input, and I'd love to see all of our meetings like this, whatever side of the dish you're on, that's the way this stuff should be done, in the United States.
I yield, Mr. Piston. Richard Fleming, any final comments you make before I make mine?
So, as we said, there's no way to draw a perfect map, so what we try to do is have clear criteria used, to in essence, remove politics, to remove where we look and try and point, well, here's an elected official, so we'll draw the map around that, or to include that. We try to draw clean maps that did keep people of interest together, we have, the maps are fully contiguous, which they've not been in the past. We try to group like townships together, because one of the keys that the county council's going to have to do, when they draw their districts, is they're going to have to abide by township line, that's part of their, and by statute they're required to do so, so we're trying to make that easy. We try to keep, for the first time, I had many comments, I heard a couple of folks talk about the CDC grant and other things, there have been times when I've heard from individuals from the city of South Bend, who felt like they did not have a representative on the Board of Commissioners, because a lot of the views that they had were not being upheld by the Board of Commissioners. This is the first time that we will guarantee a voice of the city of South Bend on our Board of Commissioners. Once again, these maps are not perfect, but we tried to remove, we tried to keep it in township line, so that removed, we had different council members moving to different seats, but that was how, that was not by intent, that's just how it worked, because we did not look at this through a political lens when we formed these districts.
That said, I will now ask, is there a motion for passage?
Just quick commentaries?
Uh, uh, now?
Okay, I can, Danna.
All right, go ahead.
Just, just a clarification, there, in the city of South Bend, I have five precincts in district one, I have entire precinct, commission, city council district two, five and six, and four precincts in district three, so there is representation, it's just a different way of, that is now combined, so.
All right, is there a motion?
A motion to approve?
I'm second to that. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Piston, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries by the vote of two to one. That said, we have second vote next Tuesday, there is no public comment at that vote, but we will take the public comment that we received today, as well as the maps, and look to incorporate that and move forward.
Thank you.
Moving on to public comments, are there any public comments?
Y'all will have to leave, we've got more stuff here if you want to skip it out.
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle, my friend in front Granger there, who's seen the Indian state, that Granger deserves some special consideration, Granger does have a vote, but it can be no greater or no less than any other community in St. Joseph County, don't come asking for extra benefits, you get the same vote I get. Andy, thank you so much for your service, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you, seeing you at these meetings, coming out of the pandemic and seeing everybody face to face again. I know the final vote will be next week, I see it as, you are beholden to no one, you are leading. In less than, in a little more than a year, somebody will be taking your place, the people downstate are of no consequence to your future. This, I'm going to say, I'm going to use this, because it was in the paper, that you said there was no chicanery, took part, took place behind the scenes.
Word.
Definition of chicanery, the use of clever, underhanded actions to achieve a goal, this was absolutely chicanery, that's what happened here, it was to gerrymander these districts to give one political party an advantage over another political party, for at least the next 10 years. Commissioner, I respect you, but please, I ask you to, at the final vote next Tuesday, to please reconsider your vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Davis, Field Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. First off, I just want to say, I'm ashamed, I'm ashamed that you voted to pass this, after so many people spoke against this, and very few people spoke in favor of this. So just what you heard here today, you know the people that spoke were not in favor of this, so I'm ashamed that you still push this through, it just shows the political pandering and the political game that so many of us people have noticed here in this community over the last 10 years especially. So let me just say that I'm ashamed, and I hope that next week, when you vote again, that you guys will rethink this, because no matter how you look at it, putting it in the South Bend Tribune, unfortunately for any Tribune reporter that's here, the South Bend Tribune is a freaking rag. I have a community activist page, I can't even share a Tribune article to my community page unless I subscribe to their paper that's going under, they can't even deliver their paper here locally, they've moved out of our community, they're not, they're not even here, they leave print here, so, saying, hey, we advertised in the Tribune, come on, man, really, who pays attention to that? There are people that have their thumbs and their eyes on the community, and most of us really didn't know about all of this, and this Fleming, I'm also a Mission Walker resident, and I've lived there a lot of years, but I'm going to tell you, I'm very disappointed with you.
Mayor Sir, who's in the room, hold on.
Drew Duncan, 2003, High Street, South Bend, um, man, these, these maps, the first concern is, Andy, I believe you're in one right now, correct? So with you retiring, that would be somebody who is not an incumbent, representing a huge portion of St. Joe County. That is, for a person that has lived here, and voted here, is represented here, not well, but is represented here, that is a huge issue for me, somebody that is going to be walking in with the keys to, basically, like, a third of the district, as you kind of kiss the crowd and wave farewell. I won't speak on, you know, how I feel about that, I think people make their decisions for whatever reason, but that does lead me to talk about district two, which I think where people are getting the racist connotations for is, like, all of the black folks have been smashed into this district. Now, based on the map, many of us live in the city, and so that would be why we're smashed. I think that this calls to reason of, calls to question a lot of things that are going to happen, whether this passes or not. If it passes, what it means now is that both parties now have to talk around black folks if they want district two. The reality of that is, with the Republicans owning one in three, is, you probably won't compete in that district at all. So what'll end up happening is, the Democrats will come, they'll give us a seat there, we won't be represented, because it won't look or sound like us, and then the two remaining seats will remain Republican, and we saw how the two to one plays out today. So if you're asking why people think this is racist, right, it's not just because of the demographics of how it's broken down, but the dynamics, the power dynamics that play out after the vote of yes comes, right? It is one to two for the next 10 years, so everybody's smashing to that district, saying, vote as a monolith, you'll be heard in this district, will be heard and promptly voted out, like, today, right? Two to one, every time, and so we've seen this play out on the council, we've seen it play out over and over again, whether it's R or D, and this is the frustration that the public is facing with politics nationwide, we're tired of each party coming and selling us this dream, telling us that they care about our representation, telling us that they care about our community, and then going and doing whatever they feel like doing, because they have the vote. If you believe and you trust that you are in that seat and empowered by citizens, empowered by voters, and that you're there to represent us, then there's no way that you can look at the testimony from today online and the people in this room, whether you agree with it or not, your voters, your constituents, and you even held the meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, and people still showed up and told you how much of a buffoon's task this is to get done, but you're doing it because you can do it, you're the Republicans, you own the party. So the last thing that I'll say is, as a person who has voted Democrat, ran on the Democratic ticket, if you're a Democrat in this room today, take this serious, because we had the option to fight for a commissioner seat, and we didn't, and we lost the seat to Dieter, and he's the one on the council today speaking as if he wants to change, but again, his party runs this.
Your time has expired, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the time, I hope that you hear what the public is saying, I hope that you understand that, like, representation really does matter, whether you want to hear what we're saying or not, as a young black professional...
Your time is over, sir.
I hear you, as a young black professional in this, in this city, I think it's important that people who are my commissioners, who I voted for, who represent the people of the public, listen to what they're saying, that's it.
Thank you.
Pam Clay, coming back to you from 1106 Bellevue, I wanted to revisit one item and bring up another. As Commissioner Dieter has mentioned, he got the memo asking from the St. Joseph County Council to work with the commissioners, I strongly encourage each of you to do that together. That, if you say the commissioners are Republican and the council is Democrat, put those two brains together. Commissioner Fleming, you're my commissioner, if you want to help people, you will listen, and those are our elected leaders, I strongly encourage you to meet with the county council. The other thing I want to talk about is, who drew your map? Brian Bosma, one of the top Republicans in the state of Indiana, and he exerted extreme influence over youth, and I just heard on the radio yesterday, he will soon complete his year of non-politics and be back to lobbying, well, he's done that lobbying through his legal firm, and it sucks, you need to listen to the people, work together with the county council. I, I, I'm done finding, you're not helping people if you're just playing by the same game. Please, Commissioner Fleming, listen to the people, work with the county, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me? Hold on, we've got one more person in the room, at least, and then we'll, we can turn it over to Zoom. Great.
Commissioner Fleming, this is for you, I wasn't calling you a racist, I said this is racist, but let me break it down to you why this is racist, since you don't seem to understand. Can you tell me, if I ask me, how many African American doors you'll have to knock on in a few years for reelection? African American doors, Mexican doors, Hispanic doors, whatever you want to call it, how many doors you're going to have to knock on?
Mission Walker, there were quite a few of them.
Just a few, just a few.
Quite a few.
No, just a few, so I'm going to look at, just look at Mission Walker, and let's look at South Bend. I'm going to be honest, Mission Walker police do a great job, do their crime rate, see, you're not going to come and go on Brookfield, you're not going to come and go on O'Brien, but you know what, if we make this South Bend, where you take a section of South Bend, and then he takes a nice chunk of South Bend, and then somebody else, then you can get involved in this, South Bend is being represented, but see, y'all not going to go into those neighborhoods, because you know why? Because I'm not even going to those neighborhoods, I have to, and I'm like, okay, so you definitely not going to go into those neighborhoods, but you need to, you don't want to, but you need to. See, and that's what's wrong with everybody, you know, you, 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 you're going to have a beautiful, I mean, you get to go to every state, Dieter, he got to go in the hood, okay? He got to go down the streets where every week an African American has been shot by another African American, that's where he got to lobby at, if he wants to get the black votes to save a Democrat, I mean, to save a Republican commissioner, he has to go in the hoods and fight for every single vote, so he's going to have to go and watch over his shoulder every time, I'm just going to be honest, y'all don't have to do any of that, just him, you think that's fair? Do you think that's fair? How about you run a district two and Dieter take your district?
There you go, Josh.
How about you do that? And I'll show you how to save South Bend black, but see, that's what I'm telling you, y'all don't have to do any of that stuff, he has to go into the heart of the crime-infested area of the city of South Bend to get votes, y'all don't have to do any of that, y'all got to cushion, it's not fair, it's not fair, he's the only one that's going in our neighborhood, so therefore, whenever he do have ideas, and he's trying to speak up for the city of South Bend, y'all going to both look at it like, that's a crime-infested area, who cares? No, no, Dieter, yes, it's going to be like that, and let's just be real, but if you ever want to go into those neighborhoods, I'd be glad to give you a tour, so you really see what the city of South Bend looks like, and how hard it is in the city of South Bend. But that's what, and I feel like every politician should have to go through every door, because I remember, and I'm going to be frank, I see, my mom and dad been in their house for 55 years, they were the first blacks move on Indiana Avenue, our dogs was poisoned, they did everything to run us out of that neighborhood, but my parents are still here, and no one's chasing them out easily, and it amazes me, because every time there's money put in the city of South Bend on the southeast side, my parents always get over the rug. Dieter always tries to come and help my parents, Dieter comes and visit, Dieter can tell you, every person in that neighborhood, who's been in that, in that neighborhood 50 or plus years, he knows them, he goes by on his own, and even before he became a commissioner, he goes by on his own and visits these people, because he met a man a police officer, he goes by and check on them, and that's, that's what everybody should be doing, so that's what I'm saying is, you guys got to, you got to, you got to get out to the bubble, you got to get into reality.
Thank you.
Dieter has my number, we'll give it to you.
Sharon, 28324 Street, South Bend, to elaborate more on what she's saying, you know, like the CARES Act money, which the council and the commissioners gladly accepted, that all came with several strings attached, nobody cared, when it came to the money for the healthcare for the minority people, Eric, you're going to have to live with what you voted, but had there been three commissioners that fairly represented the city of South Bend, who understood and lived the need that the people need this healthcare, you might not have voted that money down, and then you wouldn't have needed a veto. If the other two commissioners don't see the city of South Bend, don't feel the people, they can't fairly and honestly represent them, so it's easy to hand money out to Granger and Mission Walker and North Liberty, but when it comes to the city, the core city of South Bend, you all three need to be actively involved when it comes to federal and county money, you can't just dump it on Derek and expect his one vote to carry when it's three votes, that's where this map is so jacked up, that one commissioner will never stand a fair and honest chance for local money, state money... state money, or federal money because the two commissioners that have all the outlying area, they're gonna be worried about Granger, they're gonna be worried about New Carlyle. They're gonna be caring, caring about their white privilege. And that's exactly what this map is all about, white privilege and you don't care about the inner city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are folks wish to make public comment, you have your time and line it up. I'm sorry, we've got Michael's iPad. We've got one more person and then we'll turn it over to the Zoom folks.
Thank you. This is Michael McManus.
Hold up, Michael, we've got one more person in the building and then we'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ginger Neidre Meyer. I really don't wanna give my address because I'm a whistleblower. I have emailed you three up there. I'd like to talk to you about my concerns with the financial influence that is going on within the city council members.
Miss, can you move a little closer to the mic?
I'm concerned as a whistleblower and I'd like to talk to you privately at some point, but I have emailed you at least twice. Um, I'm concerned about the financial influence and I wanna know how we could have some transparency in the way that the funds are coming in and it's going through the city council members. Because looking at this new map, if this was the way that it was gonna be, I would then be a taxpaying voter without representation. And I, I know if I keep saying I'm gonna take into consideration the city council members and stuff like this, that. And that's great, but I wanna know every members of, everyone up here and also everybody who's a council, city council member, their financial interests and backgrounds and anything that would be an incentive for them to vote and redistrict things especially. And especially regarding issues that have to do with that, uh, $3 million that got passed in the middle of nowhere and then being voted in a splash. There's, there's something going on here. It has a lot to do with taxpayer money and all these emergency COVID dollars that are coming in from the government. And people are in positions who are taking this money and then deciding on giving themselves raises with it and, and also redistricting and it's all going into like different industries where there's members who may have financial influence, incentive, kickbacks or whatnot. And I'd like to speak with you guys about it and get some information so everything can actually be transparent before any of this redistricting goes on. So that's what I have to say about that. So at some point, please speak to me or if you don't mind, can I talk to you guys privately later?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our friends on Zoom. Any public comments?
Yes. Michael's iPad.
So you, Michael?
Thank you. Michael McManus again on Lilac Road. Um, if this vote, uh, holds up, um, speaking to all of you fellow Democrats, um, I find this actually, uh, very encouraging. From the party who has screamed about rigged elections, we've now seen, uh, a re, uh, realignment of population voting, uh, right here in, in public. And we will use that, um, as a cudgel to win all three districts uh, over the next three years. Uh, we will make sure that black citizens in South Bend and other parts of the county have a voice. We will make sure that there are no more, uh, buildup and it will come moments that the people of New Carlyle will have to face. And we will use this to make sure that all of the citizens of St. Joe County are confronted with ideas, how to make our life better and to vote on those ideas and not the initial that follows any candidate's, um, uh, name on a ballot. So Democrats, take heart, be encouraged. Uh, you now have a lot to work with in the next election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, it looks like Allison.
Yes, thank you. My name is Allison Meisberg. You and me okay?
Yes.
My address is 2633 Arrowhead Drive in South Bend. I was wondering, does every county represented by the Indiana Association of County Commissioners hire lawyers to draw their maps? It seems that this is a colossal waste of taxpayer funds. In Wisconsin, similar organizations share legal rules with the counties so that those counties can go out and hire data specialists, not lawyers, to build those maps and at a much lower cost. Those specialists are often not lobbyists, but university professors or other consultants that specialize in things such as open data and sharing things publicly and looking at, um, basically changes in populations over time. So their expertise is not in hiding things from the public or anything like that. So I question how the expenditure is directed towards law firms to building these maps or helping people. Separately, in Vigo County, the commissioners hold open office hours. Um, I have not been able to find any open office hours for our St. Joe County commissioners and was wondering if that's something we should be considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Broden, you're up.
Hi, thank you again. Um, just a couple points. I'm sorry, Joe Broden, 201 West North Shore Drive, South Bend, Indiana 46617. So it seems as if, um, you've fulfilled your legal notice on this. Um, you have fulfilled the public comments on this. You have fulfilled your obligation, um, at least two members, um, members Dieter and Costelli, um, uh, to provide comments or your duty, I'm not gonna say it's an obligation, of why you have voted in the manner that you voted today. Um, but it is one thing to, uh, take and listen to public input, but, um, full consideration and full representation of the citizens of St. Joe County is another task, I believe, at hand, um, and, uh, prompts my next question.
Are you still there, Joe? Building, uh, building point the. All right, well, let's do this. Joe, if you, can you, are you able to speak or do you still have a connection?
These actions or beings, what is going to transpire between today's input and your next vote that will fulfill your obligation to be, uh, to take this input, uh, whether it's the map that have been submitted by earlier speakers today, um, or it is even some of the tricky, um, and, and tough issues of actions being considered racist? How will you, in what practical way, uh, consider that input fully? So that we in St. Joe County will have confidence in the measures that we will take forward?
Thank you, Joe. Steve.
Yes, hi. Thank you for taking public testimony on the redistricting maps. Uh, that's what I wish to speak on. I didn't speak at first because I felt like, uh, many of the arguments made were very cogent. I'm sorry, I, I, I misheard. I thought you spoke earlier. Could you state your name and address, please? Uh, Steve Francis, 54174 Jubilee Drive, up in Clay County. So I, I'll just get to the, my testimony on, um, I would like to, to appeal to each of you as, as fair-minded commissioners, starting with Commissioner Costelli, who is my commissioner. I've always regarded you as being very fair-minded, open, transparent for the most part. I don't always agree with your decisions, but you've been approachable and, and very fair-minded. I think this is a departure from that. You're getting a lot of feedback to that regard. I just ask if this is how you want your legacy to be as you leave office? Because I think it will undermine, uh, that sense that I have and others that you have been fair-minded and tried to see many sides of an issue. Commissioner Fleming, the same saying. I think that, uh, your confusion about why this may be considered racist is astounding because it packs all, most minorities into one district and then leaves the other two free and being essentially mostly white districts. And that's been objection, objected to by many people of color here. And Commissioner Dieter, I recognize, uh, you're, you're in trouble here. You may have to switch parties again. You know, I, I do respect that you are looking at this in terms of the county-wide process. I would urge all three of you to reconsider. Look at the maps that have been presented. Look at the districts from the past and try and come up with something that is not so divisive and much more acceptable to the entire St. Joseph County community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Sarah, you are up.
Hello, my name is Derek Greenamol. I'm at 1725 East Medicine Street in South Bend. And kind of echoing the last couple callers, um, I just want to especially encourage Commissioner Fleming to consider the very, very generous and great-giving and dare I say undeserved invitation that she received earlier this afternoon from someone there who was willing to drive around her community, her community outside of her own, um, to just give her a little bit more insight and a little more perspective. I think that's a really, again, generous invitation. I really hope you will take her up on that, ideally even before this next meeting. And I, I'm really, really hoping that'll change your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Trina.
Hi, Trina Robinson. Um, I am, I, I really don't have words for today because what has just happened is typical South Bend. You do this song and dance as if you want the community's input when your minds have already pretty much have been made up. And this is why the citizens of this community are so frustrated with politics and politicians because you can't never get anybody to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of this community, but always for the sake, sake of themselves. And I don't know what it's gonna take for this community to wake up and do what is best and that is to use their right to vote and give people out who are not representative of what their, what their values and their, and their morals are. I just don't understand how someone can just sit there and just listen to tons and tons of people and then totally ignore, just totally ignore what is being said. So it is obvious what you're doing is not for the interest of the people, but for your self-serving interest. And I'm just, I'm not surprised because we see this all the time. It's often, the school preparation does it religiously. So it's just another song and dance to get the community the belief that we wanna hear you because after all, that's what you do. You, you listen, but you don't hear. And I'm just appalled that this would even take place after all that has been said and done here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pam.
Uh, I just have a couple, oh, um, mine's 3455274 Peggy Avenue, South Bend, Indiana 46635. I had just a couple things. Once, we didn't hear from Miss Fleming as to why she voted in favor of this, uh, of, of this plan. Uh, and I would like to know that. We did hear the other two. We did not hear hers. And the other thing I would like to know is, given that you've been given some maps to look at, given that you've heard all of the information from folks today, um, what do you plan, what is your plan? I know it's early because it, the vote just happened, but what is your plan between now and next Tuesday as to, um, looking at these plans and discussing among yourselves all the information that you've been, um, shared, that people have shared with you today?
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing and hearing none, a motion to recess is in order.
Still moved.
Second. We have a motion to recess. Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Oh, aye.
Mr. Costelli, how do you vote? Uh, so Derek, you can just sit here and answer.
I am. I will answer any questions and, uh.
Thank you so much.